Alrighty, good evening. We're gonna call to order this March 7th, 2024, regular meeting of the Board of Education. We have everyone here this evening. And go straight into public comments. We have three public comments this evening. First one will be Ashley Garcia, the second one will be Denise Parker, and the last one will be Aiden Sierra.
Aiden.
Aiden, thank you. So, Ashley.
My name is Ashley. Thank you for your time and willingness to meet with us today for Aiden and Aisha Sierra. I just wanna state that I hope everyone to be able to resolve this issue and come to agreement that gives Aiden a great learning experience. I just wanted to express my concern with his current school, which is Rincon, of how I feel that they have failed my son. I have been going through a cancer scare, and it is just me and my son, so I don't have much support. Thank God, my boyfriend's mom has been a blessing. We've only known each other for a couple of months, but she's definitely been stepping up for us. So, thank you. But with that being said, I work constantly. I work two jobs. On top of, you know, my procedures, having to meet with my specialists, my son has been alone because I am constantly working. So, I feel like he doesn't feel the support is there at his school. He has been acting out, and I feel like it was his way of crying for help. I've had a lot of doctor appointments, follow-ups, a lot of procedures, a lot of medication, a lot of in and out of the hospital, doctor visits. So, it can take a toll on a child. He is only barely gonna be 13 years old. So, I feel like that wasn't into consideration of his feelings. Mental health is a real thing. He definitely needs the support and behavior modification strategies to help build his confidence up as an individual. I definitely believe in the restorative justice program. He does need a positive behavioral support, and the way that Rincon was trying to push him into, what is it, that juvenile, was it JCC? Just was not a positive reaction for him. The school's not doing enough to protect him. He feels like he's being bullied. They failed in being proactive and preventative when these situations pop up. After these incidents occurred, are they processing these with both or all parties involved, working towards the conflict? Working to find a resolution? Has this school adopted the restorative justice model of resolving the issues? I am now worried about my son's safety because if he has a behavioral issue, what has been done on their end to offer support and coping skills in order to help him in his classes? Another thing I wanted to bring up as well is, since he's been not going to school, no teacher has reached out to him. Nobody has asked how he's doing. Nobody has checked up on him, on his education. They just pushed him away.
Can you wrap it up, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Another thing I wanted to bring up that was brought to my attention was his AP did ask him or did tell him that the reason why I am sick is because of him. And if you guys support that, that's a shame on you guys as well. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Parker.
Hello, my name is Denise Parker. I'm Ashley's mother-in-law. I'm here to show you all that I'm here to give them the support. The thing that we looking at is that we wanna bring Aiden out of this school district so she can have the support she need with me being there for him because I live in Oceanside, so we wanna bring him into Oceanside School District. And the thing is, is that I don't think he's a bad kid. He just been having a little problems, his mother being ill, no nobody to talk to because by his mother working, trying to support them, keeping the roof over their head, is nobody deal with him. So, he can speak out his emotional feelings. That's where I'm coming in at. You know, so far as getting him to middle school over there, I know that he been having problems in that school. But I was thinking to give him a fair chance, now that he have the support system that he need, that we can erase that off his record, so when he get up in Oceanside, they won't look at him as a bad kid, because he's not a bad kid. He just have to learn how to express his emotions and get the support he need and not be at home alone, which we all will be living together. And when he need to go to school and have problems, I can step in for his mom. Make sure I talk with the counselors and the teachers and stuff and see how we can resolve him. Because as you see, he's kinda shy. You know, he been calling names because of the way he is here, you know, being bullied. And he's the only child and kids, you know, target that. You know, so this way, if he do have a problem in school, he can come on to me. We can, you know, set up a meeting, and we can resolve it the right way. Because I don't really see him fighting that much. He just have a hard way of expressing himself. So, if you can, I know it's a lot to ask, but I wanna give him a chance. You know, not for the school to look at him as a troublemaker or somebody that's trying to fight, but to help him. You know, because when his mother is going through cancer, and you looking at an 11-year-old trying to deal with this all by himself and no one to talk to, that's hard on the kid. His emotions is all over the place. Of course, he might act out sometimes. You know, because look what his mother going through. He can't understand that this is the woman who raised him and love him. He don't wanna lose his mother. That's all he got. But now he got us. So, he got a family that's gonna stand with him, stand with mom, and we all gonna make it through it. And watch, the next time you hear about Aiden, you gonna hear nothing but good things of how he grew because only just needed some love and some support with him, okay? So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Aiden.
Hi, my name's Aiden, and I don't know what to say, but I just ask if you could give me a free fresh start. So, when I move to Oceanside, they won't look at me as a bad kid, and I could restart again, and don't cause trouble.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comments, and we will now adjourn to closed session. Thank you. So, if we just sign in, that's all we have to do, right? All we have to do is sign in.
Wanna confirm everybody's logged into Board Docs. No problems there? Right, as long as you're logged into your Board Docs account.
You could check, we look at the people personally. Click on that guy. Yeah. Yep, you're logged in, and then look up my name and say, yeah.
And then our first voting item will be the approval of the agenda.
Oh, not the roll call?
Yeah. That'll be our first vote.
Alrighty. Then we are reconvening to our regular board meeting. Call to order for March 7th, 2024. Moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have Jade Morales from Limitless Learning Academy that's going to...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And roll call, we have everybody here in attendance this evening. And we're gonna go to a report out of closed session. In closed session, the board considered dismissal charges against a classified probationary employee. It took action to approve those charges and release employee number 655791 by a vote of 5 to 0. In closed session, the board considered dismissal charges against a classified probationary employee and took action to approve those charges and release employee number 658175 by a vote of 5 to 0. In closed session, the board considered dismissal charges against a classified probationary employee. It took action to approve those charges and released employee number 632186 by a vote of 5 to 0. In closed session, the board considered dismissal charges against a classified probationary employee. It took action to approve those charges and release employee number 661068 by a vote of 5 to 0. In closed session, the board considered a statement of charges against a classified employee and took action to approve those charges and release employee number 650947 by a vote of 5 to 0. In closed session, the board considered the possible release of employee ID 658217 from their current administrative position and possible reassignment to a different administrative position or to a certified position in the district for which they are competent and credentialed to teach by a vote of 5 to 0. In closed session, the board considered the possible release of employee ID 293402 from their current administrative position and possible reassignment to a different administrative position or to a certified position in the district for which they are competent and credentialed to teach by a vote of 5 to 0. In closed session, the board considered the possible release of employee ID number 645790 from their current administrative position and possible reassignment to a different administrative position or to a certified position in the district for which they are competent and credentialed to teach by a vote of 5 to 0. In closed session, the board considered the possible release of employee number 510517 from their current administrative position and possible reassignment to a different administrative position or to a certified position in the district for which they are competent and credentialed to teach by a vote of 5 to 0. In closed session, the board considered the possible reassignment of employee ID 113114 to a different administrative position by a vote of 5 to 0. In closed session, the board considered the possible release of an employee ID number 601944 from their current confidential position and possible reassignment to a different position in the district by a vote of 5 to 0. And that concludes our report out of closed session. C5, approval of our agenda this evening. Move approval of the agenda. We're doing something new, folks. So, we're doing an electronic version or electronic vote. So, the vote is open, so please vote. Okay, yes. So, it was approved 5 to 0.
I'll move approval of the minutes.
For February 3rd of 2024?
Second.
Okay, please vote. And it passes 5 to 0. Move the minutes of February 8th, 2024? Second. Thank you. Please vote. Passes 5 to 0. Moment, approval of minutes for February 22nd.
I move approval of the minutes of February 22nd.
Second.
We have much of a second. Please vote. And we have four yeses and one abstained. It passes. Thank you. Yeah, she was not there. And we're going to, do you want the recognition?
Yes, so this evening, I'd please be able to honor our students with our Student Excellence Awards, students from across our district. So, I'd like to start off by inviting up the principal of Limitless Learning Academy that includes the Home Education Program, Principal Michael Reichel.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening. Thank you for all being here. We're very happy to be here this evening, and I'm, first of all, very happy to see so many members of our Limitless Learning community. So, can you please stand up and show some Liger school spirit?
Thanks for joining. Yes.
Appreciate y'all being here. It's very nice to be with you, distinguished board members, and Dr. Bar and Cabinet. Good to see you again. So, let's get started. My name's Michael Reichel. I'm very proud to be the principal of Limitless Learning Academy. This is our third year in operation, the newest school in Escondido. And we really feel that we've created a very positive culture, a small school with very personalized and individual attention, as well as lots of innovative programs. So, I'm gonna talk a little bit about those and how they relate to our framework. One thing to get a little bit of context is, even though we are a brand-new school and had co-created it from the beginning, and I wanna recognize members of our faculty that are here, Ms. Stringfield, and I think I saw Sonia De La Rosa there too. And we're all, we're all part of, with our students, creating an excellent school community. And we've been in a redesign cohort this year with, as you know, there's a new framework for the future and learner profile. We've been really making this part of our active and constantly evolving program at Limitless Learning. So, every Limitless Learning student is a creative problem solver. That's one of the learner profile attributes. And one of the great things about this year has been the inclusion of the elective wheel. And at first, we weren't going to be a part of that, but they created a cohort just for us, and it was wonderful because it allowed our teachers to have professional learning community planning. And out of that came so many new activities that not only were happening on the Thursdays where they came, but started to become representational throughout the school day as well. And as you can see, they include STEM, art, and music. And, you know, all kinds of STEM activities were going on in our enrichment. So, we're a hybrid program, which means kids learn online the core content like everyone else in the in-person schools. But then in the afternoons, students have an opportunity to come in for enrichment and for other exploratory items. And so, STEM activities showing their creativity, as you can see in the picture, some people are looking the other way because they couldn't figure out why their rocket went on the roof rather than in the field where it's supposed to be. Doing artistic representations, not only in art class or enrichment, but also taking that in a core content. How can I represent my thinking artistically? How can I use graphics and technology to be artistic? Musical intelligence, representing our learning in a musical way. That doesn't always just happen playing an instrument, but they have had that experience playing the ukulele and other things, and also using electronic music programs like on the Apple iPad. So, mathematical modeling. And then the one thing that I think that's really interesting is how our students are often our technological tutors, and they can often troubleshoot themselves, learn way more than certainly their principal about how to operate very complex learning management systems. So, the creativity is being exhibited in many ways at our school. Every Limitless Learning Academy student's an empathetic collaborator. We've always modeled that as a faculty from the very beginning, and our students are modeling that with some of the newest things this year. We started a video Liger TV club this year that on those Thursdays when the elective wheel is there, the kids stay after, and they are starting to produce very interesting news stories, inquiries, investigative reports, and announcements for the school. So, we're very excited about that. It's very funny and humorous. I would show you a clip, but we don't have enough time today. But you get the idea. Also, when they come in person, there's a great opportunity, as you can see in the activity in that picture, to do creative team building and community building, and a lot of friendships happen. But the other thing that I find interesting is that even though we're a virtual school, of all the surveys that we've done extensively through this redesign project and also through a teacher doing a dissertation last year, we find that even virtually, there's more of a connection our kids are finding with their teacher and with their classmates because of the intimacy and because of the trust and because of the safe aspect of this positive culture. So, even virtually, we're finding ways to connect and to really deepen our trust with each other. And one of the great new ideas this year was to have our eighth graders mentor the kindergartners. So, every week, they get together and they read together, and they go over the individual goals that the kindergartners have as part of their portfolio and also what they, what they hope to achieve during the year. So, we're excited about that and hope to continue to build on these multi-grade combinations. And we've been doing multi-grade combinations in addition on the elective wheel days where we have K through 2, 3 through 5, and 6 through 8 working together, and those, and it's very positive for all the kids, and there's lots of mutual learning going on. At Limitless Learning, every student is an empowered learner. One of the great things about doing a program like this is it does take a lot of agency and independence. And of course, we have to, you know, start early and gradually release that responsibility. But we find that we're really trying to empower them by first trying to get to know who they are as people. Give them time to do an asset inventory and get to know what attributes they have as people. And one of the ways we're doing that is we took on the World of Work curriculum and what's called the RIASEC. The RIASEC, for those of you who aren't familiar with this, is kinda similar to, some of you may have taken Myers-Briggs type things, some of the adults. But you get to know what your preferences are, and you can see what they represent. R stands for realistic, and then I stands for investigative, and the A stands for artistic, S, social, and the E is entrepreneurial, and C being conventional. And each student takes an inventory, and they find their three top attributes. And from that, they're able to explore careers and educational pathways where those kinds of gifts or assets are most most likely to succeed. And we also are quite aware that that will change year to year. So, we're gonna continue year to year building curriculum. And Ms. Stringfield is one of the teachers in a group that has developed our own unique curriculum around the world of work and have started sharing these units with the other teachers, and we're, we're starting to plan for the next three to five years how we're really going to reach out into the community and bring in the world of work and the world of expertise to the students too and allow them to go out and seek out some connections. Another great thing that we've done this year that's empowered students is we've, we had a garden grant through the Escondido Educational Foundation last year, and we're teaching them the skills to cultivate, grow, and to learn about ecological sustainability, as well as how to make this kind of thing thrive in society, and they're so excited about it. We're gonna have an outdoor classroom. Once we get these materials in with the tree stump seats, and we're gonna have to have a kind of communal idea that the classroom is life, and life is the classroom, and gardening is part of our educational opportunities. And finally, one of the things that empowers our students is really their ability to sometimes take leadership. Like, when you have a sub come in and you're doing virtual instruction, sometimes they're surprised, and they don't realize that. But every time, there's a student leader who facilitates the difficulties. You can imagine all the different learning management systems, and Shiloh will tell you, you used to work there. You know, how, how much difficulty is sometimes making everything communicate, and our students have the empowerment to take the lead in those situations. They go into breakout rooms online, and they have to facilitate themselves. It's not like a regular classroom, a teacher's walking around spinning the hats and the canes. These students really have to be trained to be able to operate independently. They do asynchronous work, and they have to really be able to monitor their own progress. So, that's one of the great assets of our school, is it empowers students to not only work together, but also to be able to motivate themselves. So, enough about the school. We're here for the students, aren't we? So, shall we move on to them? I'd like to ask all of our students to be, that are being honored, to come up to the podium. Come on down. Alright, I'm gonna start with, we'll start with our youngest, and our, we'll go up in, we have second grader here, we have two fifth graders, and we have our eighth grader. So, I'm gonna start with Rory Bound, who is in Ms. Laney's class. And Rory, if you wanted to step out, step out into, yeah, right there. That's perfect. Rory is such a pleasure to have at our school. She comes all the time to enrichment. I've I've gotten to know her and her family so well. They're a most amazing family. We love your support. Thank you for being here. Rory is with, this is, Ms. Laney is writing this on your behalf. Is with great pleasure that we award the Student Excellence Award to Rory Bound. Throughout the year, she has consistently demonstrated outstanding academic achievement, exemplary behavior, and a genuine enthusiasm for learning. She has not only excelled in all her subjects, but has also shown exceptional leadership skills and a positive attitude towards challenges. Rory is a true role model for her peers, and we are proud to recognize her accomplishments with this award. And she's also a great curator and caretaker for her family members who are here. Well, there are other students and cousins that are here. Stand up, because she's always looking out for every one of them. Yeah. So Limitless Learning is a, it's a family truly that way. Congratulations. Next up, I've been fortunate to have welcomed the home education program. It really is, in a way, similar to our program. The only difference is that the parents deliver the curriculum and in ours, the teachers do with the parents supporting. And in our home education program, I've had the honor of getting to know Corelli Barretto Silva, because she comes to campus pretty frequently to have tutorials with our teacher, Ms. Wilcox. And unfortunately, she can be here because she's ill, but she did write a very nice passage about Corelli, and I've gotten to know her. She's just a fine, fine young scholar. It is my absolute pleasure to honor fifth grade home education student Corelli Barretto Silva. Corelli has been enrolled in home ed since kindergarten. She's always been super creative, fun, and lively. She does excellent work at home with her mom and sisters and participates in as many optional workshops and field trips as possible. Corelli is a friend to all and is so warm and amicable. Academically, Corelli is an excellent reader, in addition to being a creative writer and artist. She also happens to love science and has developed strong stances regarding civil rights and social and cultural injustices while completing her social studies assignments. All of these qualities are excellent, but what I really want to focus on tonight for this excellence award is Corelli's perseverance. Corelli tries so hard, works so hard, and always perseveres, even when things get tough. She is learning that perfection does not need to be the goal. Corelli is persevering to do her personal best, which will always be enough. Congratulations, Corelli and her family, and thank you for coming. For fifth grade, we have from Limitless, a student from Ms. Stringfield's class, and it is Amy Martinez. Come on forward, please, Amy. And Ms. Stringfield writes, "It is with immense pride that I present Amy Martinez for the Excellence Award. Throughout this year, Amy has consistently impressed me with her dedication and academic achievements. Her growth across all subjects has been remarkable, demonstrating a true love for learning. However, what truly sets her apart is the initiative she's shown in pursuing a passion project. Amy not only wrote a compelling proposal for a new enrichment class in the art of Amigurumi, but she also designed it with the thoughtful purpose of donating the crocheted animals to a local women and children's shelter. Her dedication went even further as she researched and wrote a grant proposal to secure additional supplies for the class and has begun the process of working with a group of seventh grade students to achieve her goal. Amy exemplifies the true meaning of actualizing limitless potential. Her commitment to learning, her creativity, and her desire to make a positive impact on her community inspire us all. Congratulations, Amy. We are incredible, incredibly fortunate to have you in our community." And last, but not least, is our true exemplar, the product of Limitless is an eighth grader, right? And you couldn't ask for a better eighth grader. I've gotten to know Jade now. This is our third year getting to know each other. And, you know, it's just, just a wonderful, wonderful experience to have her come to school twice a week, three times a week, and just to see her sunshine, just like all of these students. And I love how we get to know each other, just even in brief interactions every day. So Ms. Magana couldn't be here tonight, but she wrote this about Jade. Jade is an excellent student who excels inside and outside of the classroom. She's a mentor for several students in the kindergarten class. Jade is an attentive student who is passionate about her learning and is always available to help her peers and teachers, as I mentioned before. She's a great ambassador that welcomes new students to class and helps them assimilate and feel comfortable. Additionally, she's a straight A student and a leader and member of the STEM team. Outside of the school, Jade is a gymnast who has won several awards this school year. With that said, Jade Karina Morales Nichols embodies the spirit of this award. Congratulations.
Next up, Miller Elementary Principal Casey. Sorry, that was my fan club. All right. Good evening, President Houston, members of the board, Dr. Ibarra and Cabinet. My name is Maria Casey, and I'm the principal at Miller Elementary. Before I begin, I would like to recognize all of the staff and parents that are here tonight from Miller. So if you could please stand up so we can recognize you. So our parents and our staff are exceptional in every way, and they've really helped all of our students be able to unlock their unlimited potential. So if you don't know, Miller is a very special place. We're kind of hidden, and we're one of the smallest schools here in Escondido. At Miller, we strive to create a culture of kindness where everyone feels seen, valued, and supported to take risks. At Miller, every student is an empathetic collaborator. They actively listen, engage, and recognize diverse perspectives and achieve a common goal. And so if you look up in the pictures, you'll see our robust buddy program that we have. So our lower elementary schools team up, team up with our upper grade classrooms, and they do everything from art projects to reading buddies to STEM activities. And it just creates this culture of being able to identify with someone else on campus. At Miller, everyone's a critical thinker. They are inquisitive learners that can reflect and critically analyze information. There's a lot of collaborative grouping that happens and a lot of problem solving, as you see evidenced in our pictures. And then at Miller, every student is a creative problem solver. So this year, we had a Lego robotics team, and then we also had a girls who code. And that embodies just those having different problems to solve and finding creative, creative ways to solve them. And with that, tonight, I am proud to recognize three Miller students who represent the can-do attitude of Miller. So I'd like to call up my three students, please. I have Alicia Nieto, Noah Sola, and Joseph Guaduama. Come on up. I don't think they knew their pictures were going to be up. So first up, I'd like to talk about Alicia. Alicia truly exemplifies what it means to be a Miller Mustang. Her positive attitude and determination to learn and succeed are truly inspiring to those around her. Alicia has made excellent academic growth this school year. Her I Ready scores have soared, and she is a reading machine. In math, Alicia has already reached her stretch goal for I Ready. Academics are not only Alicia's strengths. She's also a member of Miller's Girls on the Run, and she has a blue belt in martial arts. Thank you, Alicia, for your positivity and for making Miller a fun place to be. Next up, we have Noah Sola. Noah has emerged as a role model for his peers and is truly a Mustang on the move. Fun fact about Noah is that he saved up his blue reward tickets and purchased a popcorn and movie with the principal. That's not an easy feat. What's even more remarkable about Noah is he's a graduate of our CEES program. I'm super proud of him. So just give you a small moment. When faced with academic challenges, Noah perseveres and asks questions to better understand material. Noah is a hardworking student who has overcome so much to be part of our general ed program at Miller. And it's a true testament to our CEES program and what we can offer students. He is a 100% role model for all of our students in terms of how to tackle problems and how to think about it first and do the right thing and to model for other students what it is to be a Miller Mustang. And Joseph's going to close it out for us. He's going to come up and speak. Oh, whoops. We are so lucky to have Joseph at Miller. Joseph is a wonderful example of an excellent student. Not only is Joseph a hardworking student who exhibits scholarly behavior daily, but he is also a shining example of excellent citizenship. What sets Joseph apart from his peers is his ability to observe where his help is needed and then take the initiative to assist. He is humble and has a lighthearted and positive attitude. And his classmates and teacher enjoy his kind heart and sense of humor. It is an honor to give this award to Joseph. Congratulations. And next up, from North Broadway Elementary, Principal Cherry Moore.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm very happy to be here. Thank you, Dr. Ibarra, Cabinet, Board, for letting us come and tell us all about North Broadway. I'd like to recognize our teachers and staff that are here. Would you please stand? We have Mrs. Creators, Mrs. Waters, and Ms. Romano. And then our families. Please go ahead and stand up, our families. I was teaching them about what a board meeting is when we first got here. They're fascinated. Okay, so we are the North Broadway Broncos. We are very excited to be working with the Framework for the Future this year. We're part of the redesign cohort, so we'll be telling you lots more about that in the upcoming months. For today, we're going to focus on a few ways that we're living the Framework for the Future. So at North Broadway, every learner is an empowered learner. You can see in the pictures some examples of that. First, we have some students that have been inspired by text, stories that they've read. They've gone out, decided to connect with the community. So the class that's in the picture actually wrote letters to children that are in Rady's Children's Hospital at Halloween, making them a card so that they got to have a wish from a student outside of the class because they were finding that they were feeling sad that they weren't there and wanted to bring some joy. We have another picture of a group of students that are looking into a garden bed. This group of students wanted an ELOP class to go to garden and bring a garden to their side of the campus. So they convinced a teacher to do that. They've learned a lot. They persevered with it because they actually learned. Wasn't it that you can't put eucalyptus at the bottom, Ms. Romano? So if you put, just for the record, if you put eucalyptus at the bottom of a garden bed, you put dirt on top, you put the plants in, they don't grow as well as you thought. So it was a good learning experience that helped them be an empowered learner, change that, fix it up. And next time, there won't be eucalyptus at the bottom of the garden bed. For everybody in this room. Okay, the next picture, we are showing off some of the first graders. They are building a roller coaster, trying to learn more about momentum and see if they can get that all that we're using from one side all the way to the other. Another example of our empowered learners is our Fun Friday. One of our teachers started this, and it's kind of grown where on Fridays, the kids get to just research something they want to learn about, engage in it, and then they report out to their class. So at North Broadway, all of our students are empowered learners. At North Broadway, every student is a critical thinker. We have lots of examples of our kids out there being critical thinkers, being inquisitive, wanting to know more about the world. In our kindergarten classes, you can see these girls sitting there. And what they're doing is they're actually figuring out what's the best way to measure the object that they have. They're picking up little different types of cubes and figuring out what would be the most effective way. Then our fifth graders are on a field trip. They're analyzing the watershed of the lagoos and then finding out how the organisms in some of the plants are causing the decomposition of the logs and the materials out at the lagoon. So they're thinking about it and wondering, and then taking that back to the classroom and proposing new ideas of how can you better use the watershed and the resources in the lagoon. At every, at North Broadway, every student is an empathetic collaborator. This is actually one of North Broadway's strengths. Whether you're a little Bronco or a big Bronco, we are all empathetic collaborators. In the pictures, you can see a lot of our students working together. Some of our kindergartners, we imagining how to build a model of a cube with some different objects. They had to come up with a plan together and then build it. Some of our friends are sitting there reading and coming together to make meaning of the text with each of them reading a different part. And then I wanted to highlight some of our big Broncos, the adults at North Broadway. We are going through that redesign process. And so one of the pictures is showing the staff taking evidence from different videos of what they've been watching and seeing and figuring out how we're going to design towards the Framework for the Future. They're looking at the evidence, deciding what do we love at North Broadway? What do we like and what do we need that we don't see? And then in their TLC meetings, this is where they're going in and they're collaborating together, hearing each other, figuring out how to reach our kids even more than we did before. So it's all about collaboration at North Broadway. And now for our students. Can I please have my three students join me? All right, Sadi, you're going to be first. All right, this is Sadi Elita. Sadi is a fifth grader at North Broadway. Here's a few words that her teacher wrote. Sadi has quiet determination. She engages in all learning opportunities and challenges herself to always do her best. Her intervention teachers and classroom teachers all agree she is a model of determination. In addition to learning, Sadi takes responsibility for her materials, her schedule, her family communication. She acts as the liaison between the school and her family, communicating effectively well beyond her years. She is also an amazing, big sister to two younger brothers. She helps- She helps them complete their homework at home, make sure they pick up their clap from their classroom every day. She seeks opportunities to volunteer in the kindergarten classrooms to read to them and help them learn. Sadie sets goals for herself and takes small steps each day to reach them. She's very close to meeting her stretch growth in I Ready. And we are excited and proud of you for all that you do and the bright future you have ahead, Sadie. I'd now like to present Sophie Luna. Sophie Luna is an excellent student because she gives 110% every day. She truly strives to do her best in everything she does. Beyond that, Sophie is an excellent classmate. She wants the best for her classmates and does what she can to help anytime someone is in need. As all classes do, our class has students who struggle emotionally, behaviorally, or academically. Sophie reaches out to those students every day and guides them in the right direction. They know how compassionate she is and they seek her out to get things done when it gets tough. Sophie always responds in kind. She truly has a way of connecting students who are in need. Congratulations. Take a breath. I do it too. All right, this is Adam Soriel. Adam Soriel's a student who was in our SCSP program last year and is now in our general education class. Adam has exceptional writing skills, distinguishing him as a standout wordsmith, weaving narratives and analysis with creativity, passion, and unique perspective that captivate his audience. His ability to read with exceptional expression allows him to convey the essence of literature in a truly engaging manner. In addition to his literary talents, Adam exhibits a remarkable proficiency for math, effortlessly navigating complex concepts with analytical prowess. You know what that is? I'll tell you later. What sets him apart, however, is his ability to impressively gather his knowledge and retain it. He demonstrates a rare ability to recite information with remarkable accuracy. Congratulations, Adam. Thank you.
All right, thank you all for showing up. We are going to take a quick five-minute break so that families that need to get home and get some homework done, they can get going to it. So we'll be coming back in about five minutes. Thank you. If we could, everyone take their seats, please. We're going to start back up. Thank you very much. So we're going to go into communications at this point, E1. We have 17 speakers this evening. We're going to let everyone speak, reference whatever issue they would like to talk to us about, but we are going to limit the time to two minutes due to the number of people that want to speak. If once you hear the beeper, if you can just kind of finish up what you want to say so that we can make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to speak to us this evening. With that being said, our first speaker is going to be Andrea Seema.
All right. Hello, Dr. Abara, Cabinet members, Board members, President Houston. I come with a heavy heart tonight as many have been notified that their jobs are being eliminated. Mine is intervention included. While it was stated at the previous board study meeting that cuts were happening that would affect people, it wasn't felt by all. In the community, myself, as anything but words, just words. The district brought you a very well thought-out plan, completely based off what was in the LCAP survey. And you didn't even mention the survey, not once. The community was part of that survey. Your staff were part of that survey. Your parents were part of that survey. I know many constituents and stakeholders that find those surveys as important and they feel their voice is being heard. You have effectively silenced their voices by not even bringing up the validity of that survey and its results. Reminder that it's the teachers who touch the lives of every student every day. What affects those teachers affects the children of whom they serve. Are you really thinking about students first? I am sure that many in this room and those that are watching from home have the same question that I will put before you. We see and hear about the cuts that only affect the school sites and the students. Where are the cuts from the district office? We have only been made aware of cuts that are hitting the sites. Where are the administrative cuts? A very wise man, a mentor of mine, was once known to say, "When you make cuts, keep them as far away from the classroom as you possibly can." Dr. Caston would be appalled at how this is handled. Your union has warned you repeatedly to write size for three years. This could be a direct result of mismanagement. Much of this could have been avoided. This is also just another occurrence of decision-making without forethought. The district has a bad habit of starting programs and throwing them out the window without giving them a chance to thrive. I urge you, please, if you have an inkling of a plan, we beg you to be transparent as you are affecting the education of 14,000 students, many of which need intervention to be successful. As an education specialist, I foresee these cuts backfiring and an increase of work on classroom teachers and nothing being taken off to relieve the situation. Bad meets bad. Your teachers beg you to hear them and allow them to do the good work they can do, involve them in the decision-making process, and please look again at the LCAP survey. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is Sierra Satterstrom.
Good evening. My name is Sierra. I work at Conway as a K6 STEM impact teacher and a reading interventionist. This is my third year in the district, but my 14th as a teacher. I wanted to take a moment to tell you about myself and my concerns about what is happening next year. Did you know that if you go to the EUSD website, the first picture you'll see is my classroom? In that photo, the students are doing heart dissections, which is something I brought to Conway with a grant that I wrote. In the three years I've been in Escondido, I have written and received between $15,000 to $20,000 for Conway. My grants have fully funded a Lego Robotics Club for our second and third graders. I also coached the ELOP-funded Lego Robotics for fourth to sixth. These grants have allowed me to invest in a science classroom library, multiple engineering kits, and science materials for all of our students in grades kinder through sixth. One of my grants purchased close to $5,000 worth of reading intervention books for our team. Last year, I watched the board meeting where you stressed the importance of early intervention and approved funds for the schools to have interventionists. I noticed the board never asked for my results. So here it is. In my most recent eight-week session, 87% of my students went up between one to three grade levels. And I'm not the only interventionist making these gains. Nobody's asking. I watched last month and I heard the LCAP survey results and learned that intervention services was the highest rated priority. You spent over 30 minutes talking about a crossing guard company, but not a single second about intervention. What is the point of that survey if you did not speak on it? On Saturday, I received my letter that I was not going to be contracted next year. I am site-funded and when you cut the site funds, you cut Conway's STEM program, our art program, and our compassion crew for social emotional learning. There is so much that is happening at Conway and yeah, someone else will finish it for me.
Thank you very much. I apologize. So Chit Maldenado.
Good evening, Board members, Cabinet, and community members. I am currently an employee, but I started as a parent here at the district. And I'm going to finish Ms. Satterstrom's message. You might be thinking, I'm so very sorry for your job was cut, but we have the wheel. That's true, and I hope to God that it isn't cut. Teachers need that collaboration time. But when you break it down, a third-grade student at any individual school is going to get STEM for seven one-hour classes. That's seven hours of science in one year. You might be thinking, but no, they also teach science in the general education classrooms. That's true, but did you know that there was a national study done in 2018 that found that students in grades K through third were taught science for an average of 18 minutes per day? Yesterday, I learned that you've decided to put off purchasing a new science curriculum. Where are teachers supposed to get their content from the outdated books that came out in 2008? These books are older than our entire district's population. Solely reading from a textbook is not engaging nor effective. My last note I like to share, you're rationalizing letting us go because we are all tips. Did you know that you haven't offered an elementary general education teacher approbationary contract since 2020? We are here and we are experienced. Let us do our jobs. I understand the necessity to make cuts. I understand that our budget is taking a hit because of next year's COLA. But I am more than a dollar sign. I bring a lot to the table and I make a difference. You should have at least taken a second of your time to consider my importance and that of the other 50 interventionists you cut. You should be having a conversation about what Escondido's families are asking for, and you need to represent the people that elected you to office. On my behalf, I am here to speak on behalf of our students, the future of our community, and the staff members whose jobs are being sacrificed to stay within budget. This temporary decision will have a massive impact in costing the future of the students currently enrolled in the USC. Intervention teachers play a vital role at each of our sites. Removal of intervention teachers will put current students at a higher risk to become another statistic of the incarcerated system and other circumstances. I ask that if you please be an empathetic collaborator and come up with a solution to avoid the matter that directly affects and will affect the lives of each and every member of our current and future community members.
Thank you very much. Mr. John Leary.
Good evening. Good evening, families, staff, Cabinet, Board members. I know that the state COLA was much lower than it was expected to be. However, you know, we need to start taking some accountability for our irresponsible financial spending and allocation of funds. Over the last year or so, we have spent over $200,000 on the design team's learner center collaborative consulting company. I think we've heard a lot of it today with the empathetic collaborator, the critical thinker, all the talking points that we heard many of the principals talk about today when they were introducing their kids. We got some good talking points out of that. I think that a lot of our schools have similar things to those already. I was in a meeting a couple of weeks ago where a district-level administrator was talking about developing a policy that happened to be developed by the CDE as well. That sounds like redundancy to me, money being spent redundantly. Yesterday, I was in a meeting where we were talking about an SEL program that comes into our school and I was talking about how we should think about, is this the best fit? And I was told, oh, it's funded through a grant, so we just find the cheapest thing. That worries me. Right? And then we're heading into this budget crisis. I know that we have thought about it. I remember Dr. Abara on Zoom talking about, we're going to hit a cliff in three years. So what happened? If it were me, I would like to keep all the cuts away from the classroom. We're decreasing our staff next year by over 10%. I hope the burden is shared equally among all staff members. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Juan Vargas.
Yikes. Dr. Abara, members of Cabinet, President Houston, and members of the Board. I understand that certain programs are on the chopping block due to the expiration of COVID funding. As a parent whose children have experienced the positive impact of academic interventions on their academic development, I personally attest to the importance of maintaining these programs for at least the next few years. My oldest child was in first grade during the pandemic and is now preparing to enter fifth grade. While he hasn't encountered significant academic difficulties due to the pandemic, my thoughts often turn to the other students in his class who may have experienced greater learning setbacks. My youngest, the second grader, has benefited from the math interventions put in place and has progressed immensely. Having attended a few board meetings now, it's evident that while test scores are improving, it is clear to see that right now is not the time to pull interventions. I worry that by pulling interventions, our students will experience larger class sizes and less one-on-one support. Please consider continuing all the amazing work we've been doing for our kiddos and keep the academic interventions intact. On a different note, I'd also like to bring attention to the misalignment between the schools, the district's school calendar, and that of the Escondido Union High School District calendar. While the high school district begins the 24-25 academic year on August 13th, the elementary district begins a week later on August 19th. This disparity will create challenges for numerous parents who have children in both districts, necessitating last-minute childcare arrangements. I urge the district to revisit the calendar and enhance communication and coordination with the high school district to mitigate the negative impact on families. And please, these interventions are essential to our kids. We need to keep them in there and we need to try our best to make sure that we are in line with helping them out through these times. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next will be Diana Camp.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Diana Camp. I am an eighth-grade teacher at Mission Middle School. I teach the dual-language program and newcomers, and I absolutely love it. But tonight, I'm here as a parent. My husband and I are deeply invested in the schools here in Escondido. I have three children, all part of the dual-language program. And something that we loved about our district when we moved to this city was the commitment from Escondido Unified to the dual-language education. This matters to my family, and I know it matters to many families in our city. We are a bicultural and bilingual family ourselves, and we love that our school system here in Escondido supports that. Given the current situation, it seems like the commitment is changing and not being made a priority despite the many years of investment. Mission is the only middle school that provides this program, and now it's being cut in half. I am wondering what the plan is to continue serving all the families at FAR, Lincoln, Pioneer, and Glenview Elementary, who have chosen to enroll their kids at those schools for the dual-language program. What happens to them after fifth grade? Where will they go to continue their dual-language education if it doesn't continue at Mission? So that was my question. Uh, so that was my question. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Mary Perkins. Mary Alice.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Alice Perkins, and this is my twenty-fifth year in the Escanedo Union School District. I taught first grade, third through fifth grade, reading intervention to candor through third grade, fifth grade newcomers, and now I'm currently teaching math intervention for grades three through five. I have a Masters of Science in Education and been a master teacher to twelve student teachers over the years. I'm sad to say that over the past several years, I've seen the worst deficit in learning in both reading and math in all the years of my teaching. As an example, I'm teaching fifth graders first and second grade math. And they're showing some growth, but to be honest with you, um, out of small group intervention, excuse me, to be honest, without small group intervention, they will have a difficult time ever catching up with the current standards that they need to meet. My students enjoy coming to me due to the fact that they are being taught at their level and they feel successful. I meet with them multiple times throughout the week to reinforce math strategies that they are lacking. I explained to them that they're, uh, excuse me, I explained to them that learning, sorry. I explained to them that learning and using these strategies will give them the base that they need to move on to more difficult problems throughout their school career. In fact, we read over daily learning objectives for each lesson to ensure that they are fully aware of the targets that they are expected to achieve. I'm also constantly communicating with their teachers, obtaining classroom input as well as creating SMART goals and individual student learning plans to ensure the greatest success. These goals are shared with the students to allow them the responsibility for their own learning, as well as parents to support them with a team effort with myself along with their classroom teacher for their educational success. However, if intervention is lost and class sizes increase due to the loss of so many absolutely amazing teachers, these children will not only suffer for lack of understanding, but also social, emotional, and behavioral trauma. I'm already seeing it from my first graders that I taught during the COVID lockdown, who went to school online or through hybrid learning, missing over five months of school. They're fifth graders now and with a huge learning gap, either because of the type of learning wasn't good enough for them or because they simply didn't go to school. I became a teacher because I love to see the aha moment from a child. The tireless hours of planning and preparation mean nothing without that. My students are the most important part of my job, and if they are just a member and can't be supported as individuals, then I fear what will become of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Melinda Britt.
Good evening, um, board, cabinet. My name is Melinda Britt, and I'm a fourth grade teacher at Pioneer Elementary. And in my twenty-four years here with the district, there's three things that have happened over the course of these twenty-four years consistently. One would be budget cuts, two intervention teachers, and three, a lack of curriculum for science. This school year, I have twenty-three students, three of whom are newcomers, and I have nine kids out of my twenty-three that go to the reading lab. They're taught by two amazing ladies who have very little support. It's just the two of them, teaching kids who are reading far below. Now, while they're, while my kids are at the reading lab, I've got the rest of my kids. I can work in small groups and teach those kids the lack of skills that they have for their reading. Because out of my twenty-three kids, I have one student who's reading at grade level. So to not have our ladies in our reading lab available next year is truly a travesty. Those kids at my school and all of our other sites, we need those intervention teachers because they have such power and we need them. We cannot cut them. Or what's gonna happen? We're gonna pass on kids to middle school that are reading at a third grade level? Maybe a fourth grade level if we're lucky? Not a good idea. Uh, the next thing, science. So while I've been with the district, um, I did have the privilege. Pioneer had a grant for a while, and I got to teach uh, two years in what was called the science lab. Now, those kids today, they're in middle school, some are in high school. When I see them come back to campus, they say, Miss Britt, I loved science with you. It was the best thing ever. And here we are going into next school year without a curriculum, with a two thousand eight textbook that does not have next generation science standards. It doesn't meet our students' needs, nor is it helping with the framework for the future and developing those critical thinkers or empathic collaborators. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe it's Mikhail Robertson.
Michelle.
Michelle, okay. My apologies.
That's how its teachers feel when we're trying to pronounce some people's names. Uh, my name is Michelle Robertson. Good morning or good afternoon, good evening, board and cabinet members. Um, I have been teaching at the E U S T, at E U S T for twenty-eight years. Twenty in the classroom and eight as a reading intervention teacher at L R Green. I'll get straight to my point. It has been proposed that intervention at our schools be cut entirely. The budget deficit has left five of our seventeen elementary schools, Bernardo, L R Green, Miller, North Broadway, and Reedy Creek, with no SIP supplemental or Title I funds. The remaining twelve sites will also be affected, but will still receive Title I funds that will give them the option of retaining an intervention teacher. During the board's previous study session, it was proposed that one point nine million dollars be spent on mitigating thirteen projected K one combos. A suggestion is to reduce that amount and provide a para for those combos, which would free up funds to provide one intervention teacher at our five sites that have no option of using Title I funds to keep an intervention teacher. On average, one intervention teacher can support sixty to ninety students throughout the school year as the students enter and exit the program on an as-needed basis. One K combo affects twenty-five students. Therefore, the same amount of money is spent, but intervention supports a much larger population of students. A total of a hundred and twenty-five K one combo students are affected versus three hundred to four hundred and fifty total at, at-risk intervention students being affected. An optional suggestion is to make the wheel program bi-weekly for a fifty percent savings. These proposals spend the least amount of funds with the most amount of impact for our students. I have always been proud to work for this school district, one who prioritizes inter- intervention and uses evidence-based research to train and educate us in identifying and supporting our at-risk students. Commendable work has been provided by Artosis, and they have equipped us well. As class sizes may rise, now more than ever is the time to let our experienced, trained intervention teachers support our students at a targeted level. Thank you to everyone that came out in support of intervention tonight, and an email was emailed to all of you with more details.
Thank you very much. Michael Davis.
Thank you for letting me come and speak with you this evening. I'm actually gonna speak to you about something I was not prepared to talk about today. I am a parent of a child who is a success story because of interventive teachers. My kid grew up with speech impediments and reading comprehension issues that he could not have been able to handle without the extra assistance that comes from outside teachers from the regular classroom. I can celebrate today that my son is an active ninth grader at one of the high schools at this school, and he's able to keep up with the educational process right now because of the intervention teachers that assisted him through elementary school and middle school. Without that extra assistance, he would have been left behind. Without that extra assistance, my son at this point would not be daydreaming about what college that he wants to go to. But he would be trying to keep up and be dismayed in his classroom. Today, as you think about the decisions that you make, I want you to hear the success story as well. My son is at level in ninth grade because of these teachers. He would not be where he is right now without these teachers. He has a passion for education because of these teachers. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you very much. Heather McCullen. Quellum.
Good evening. I'm a parent from Conway. I am really wondering if you read the LCAP survey. I don't think that my voice is being heard or valued. Is the survey worth me doing? My daughter is a third grader at Conway. I spoke with her about the changes coming, and she was almost in tears about potentially not having her art and science classes and the amazing teachers that currently teach her. I believe these classes are just as important as any of the other classes. I also believe to be detrimental to our students to have intervention teachers, please explore other options. I know that there has to be a cut somewhere, but please try and explore any other option that could potentially be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ernestina Ortega.
Hi, my name is Ernestina Ortega, and I'm a parent from two kids from Conway. And I'm wondering if um, the district uh, saw the LCAP uh, results or anything. I'm frustrated that at the previous meeting, the survey result from the LCAP was presented. And that survey is something we as communities should continue to take on our time or on. I don't feel my voice was acknowledged. Our STEM programs, they need them. School needs them. Please keep them.
Thank you. Thank you. This is Janet, and I cannot make out the last name. It looks like C H R A E S. Okay, I apologize.
Good evening. Well, my name is Janet Clones. Uh, I have two children that attend Conway Academy. I kindergarten, kindergartner and a sixth grader. Um, I am also an N T S at Conway Elementary, previously at FAR, and I am currently the P T A treasurer for uh, the last two years. Uh, I am here today because I am deeply concerned about the cuts that are being put before us. Uh, I feel like these cuts are not in line with the LCAP survey results. Uh, I fail to see how stripping the most vital and parent-prioritized programs, for example, intervention, uh, will not have immediate negative, immediate negative impact on our students. Um, on a more personal note, uh, we moved to Escandido. Uh, it's been almost three years now. And when we talked to people that we knew in San Diego about moving to Escandido, and they were very concerned about me sending my kids to the school district. Um, we had previously been in Carlsbad. We had lived in San Diego. Uh, they said, oh, it doesn't have good reputation. You're gonna be sending your kids to a Title I school. Are you nervous? And when I had visited, I, I was just blown away. I was like, no, I'm not nervous. I feel like they're going to succeed. And, you know, Sarah Satterstrom talked about the first picture when you pull up E U S D website being her class. That's my daughter in the picture. Uh, Dr. Barra, you've met my daughter and interviewed my daughter just recently, uh, Olive. She was here last year receiving an award, and I, let me tell you, she, you know, she does the work. She works really hard, but she does it because she's challenged at the school. And they, the people at this school have worked so hard to help her excel in a way that she didn't receive at other places. So I just really want you to see how this could be so harmful to the students. If you could keep the cuts away from the classroom, as Mr. Lakey said, that's the most important thing. Thank you.
Gabriela Ro.
Yes, uh, so to translate, uh, what she was saying is that she is a mom of uh, English learner student at Conway Elementary. Um, she was always had a great experience, uh, felt very encouraged to be participating in her, at the school. And she was shocked by this recent news around the cutting of intervention teachers. Uh, she believes that they are vital to the learning and to instruction for students. She feels that it's not just to take that resource away from the students as they do very important work for students.
Thank you very much. Next is Samantha Villa Vincenzo.
Hello, I'm here to support Dr. Barra. Uh, my name is Samantha Villa Vincenzo. I am a parent, a current kindergartner, and grew up attending school in this school district as well. So I have seen how it's grown. I've seen where it's failed. Um, I have some big concerns in regards to the budget cuts proposed to our community that do not represent the feedback that was requested for the, for the LCAP. As a parent of a current student, an incoming student, I'm concerned how these cuts would immediately impact the students as well as the teachers. You want to expand classroom sizes as well as take away resources. You will have teachers burned out, students struggling, and being left behind academically, which will ultimately end up in low test scores. These budget cuts will cause more harm than anything. It is extremely important to keep programs like early intervention, STEM, and art. I ask you to take into consideration to avoid making budget cuts on a school level as I'm sure there are, there can be cuts on a direct district level that can be made. We need to fight for our students and teachers and give them the tools they need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Pete Fisher.
So, good evening. My name's Pete Fisher. I am one of the uh, behavior specialists for the middle school level students. Um, what does that mean? I tell my students, I tell students when they ask me, who are you? What do you do? I tell them I'm an advocate. I'm an advocate for them, for their voice. Because many times my students, the marginalized students that I work with, they do not have a voice. They are kind of put off. Behaviorally, they're challenged. Many of them have trauma behind them, and they have struggles being in school. It's not a priority. And so the reason I'm here tonight is to be their voice. We talked about intervention specialist teachers, but I'm talking more in the area of social, emotional. But I'm talking more in the area of social emotional intervention specialist. And those individuals who are working with students that, like I said, are the most marginalized of our students. Um, we talked about empowering learning before. My students need to be taught how to be empowered to learn. Once again, education, being in the classroom is not their priority. Survival is priority for many of them. And with that in mind, you know, who's going to teach them that? With these cuts, we're losing a lot of our tier two and tier three supports. And without them being able to give kids, once again, the ideas of how to learn, what it's like to be a scholar, what it's like to be in a classroom, what it's like to have a trusted adult behind them, having a safe space to go to. My students are going to miss that. And what's going to happen to them, my fear is, we're going to continue to marginalize them and put them into classrooms that they aren't going to get the learning, if they get that. Most of them, my fear is expulsions and suspension rates are going to go up. With that, I'm going to end.
Thank you, sir. Last one is uh Helen Vargas.
Hello, my name is Talen Vargas. I am a parent at Rock Springs Elementary. Um, first, I'd like to say good evening. And I'm thankful for this opportunity that as parents and caregivers and staff members that we have a chance to have our voices heard. I ask that this opportunity not be one simply used to appease the public, but to be considered seriously as we all have, we are all here um, for the betterment of our children, um, children's education and future. It's not easy for many of us to get up here. Um, I'd like to say that my children are not directly affected by these cuts. They are um pretty much self motivated. They are help, they are helpful in the classroom. They don't, they don't need a lot of what these inter, these other children need with intervention. Um, but I do recognize that if these um services are taken away from students who really need them and class sizes are affected, classrooms are affected, that the individualized learning that many students need, they will not be able to receive. Um, so it has come to our attention rather late in the game, I feel, that uh because of mismanagement of funds at state level, that next year's state's funds will be greatly reduced because of this decision. Um, not because of this, the decision to not continue classified services, intervention services and many teacher contracts has, um, has been made. Although we cannot control what is done at the state level, we do have um something we can do at a local level. And we should not let this opportunity pass us by simply because to do otherwise, to um not cut these services would be difficult. It's hard to find, to make those decisions. Um, I am part of PTA. I recognize at a very small, small level how hard it is to make decisions um when it comes to money, when it comes to how to use funds. Um, but we teach our children to have a growth mindset and I, we please ask that, um, you take on that example. By having our schools maintain, or even better, the current system, to not let it become weaker by taking away vital help and having increased class sizes. Um, if you have a way to make it happen, please look at that. Um, every year you lose hundreds of families because the schools are not, schools are not fulfilling their children's needs. Uh, please find a way to keep these wonderful teachers and staff members so that we don't lose any more great families to our school communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we, we have more speakers, but they're going to um speak at the agenda N nine. So if you did put a card in and I did not call you, we were bringing up at the N nine point. Um, I wanted to thank everybody that did come out and voice um their opinion. We do listen to what you have to say. Um, and we appreciate everything that you do say. So, uh, moving forward, Dr. Bar, did you have some?
I could just make a comment. We are hearing you. I want you all to know that the board is seriously considering. We're at the initial stages of making these horrific decisions that nobody wants to make. But things are, I think, things could look different. We're looking for ways that um to keep intervention because intervention is a vital part of just a teaching and learning process. And so we're going to, we're exploring all these other avenues. But please know that tonight, those decisions are not being made. It's part of the budget development process that we do every year. If we have money that we're looking at exploring ways, it's conversations that continue to have. Um, we have another board workshop scheduled with the board on the tw- twenty fifth of of April, again, in preparation for a board adoption. The board must adopt a, a budget by June, by the end of June, by our second meeting in June. They also must uh adopt an LCAP. So I know a lot of, of exploration continues to work. We're looking at ways to uh provide intervention services even after school. So uh please know that uh we are listening and we are looking for creative ways to figure this out.
Dr. Ibarra, could I ask for some additional information?
Sure.
Um, could we please get some information? Um, just some, some, some research is what I'm asking for on where the most effective interventions occur. Uh, is, is the most effective intervention, according to research, in the classroom, in the regular day classroom? Or is it through pullouts? And what, what's the body of research around that? Um, and also if we could just uh maybe get a little bit more of an explanation in the future about how we will ensure that our students continue to get inter, intervention, have intervention available to them. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Joan, do you have a question?
Yes, I wanted to ask Dr. Ibarra too, if you could address, I heard the comment about the, that there should be some reduction in administrative staff and so forth, and I believe that we announced tonight.
Yes, we, uh, beginning of closed session, the board on made uh made the decision, went with our recommendation to reduce, I want to say, six administrative positions throughout our district.
Mounting to.
Mounting to, it's about a little over one million dollars of of administrative positions, both uh site and district office positions.
Any, any other comments? I see none. All right, moving on, uh, public hearings. We have no public hearings. And report from the California School Employees Association, chapter one fifty.
Good evening. I'm going to let everybody exit out. Just so that there's less people to hate me after this.
Okay. Uh, good evening, board and cabinet members. First, I would like to take a moment to express my gratitude to all the staff and families who are present here today and have taken the time to express their concerns regarding the budget cuts. It is heartening to see such dedication towards uh the well-being of our students. I would also tag to, like to take the opportunity to assure everyone that CSCA and EUSD are committed to the job security of all classified staff. Um, our HR department has put in a great deal of effort over the last few years to fill vacant positions. Many are still remaining. Um, and just recently ensure that anyone who could possibly be affected by the budget cut has alternative employment opportunities. Uh, you can rest assured that CSCA shares the same values of EUSD and are dedicated to the well-being of our staff and our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, report from Triple A.
I apologize, this is going to be a little bit long this evening, so bear with me. Uh, good evening, President Houston School Board, Dr. Bar and Cabinet. Today is an extremely difficult day for all of us in the district. Our dedicated temporary employees are being released after up to four years of service. They have lived and breathed EUSD and now their lives have changed drastically since this weekend. Tonight makes this very real. Times like this makes the most cohesive relationships break down out of fear, fear of the unknown and fear of change. It is important as we travel through this budget crisis to make sure our primary focus is the community and our students. First, I would like to address our temporary employees. Your dedication and hard work has not gone unnoticed. I know this doesn't help, but just know that you've had a positive impact on your students and your coworkers. And for that, we are forever grateful. For our school board, I don't envy your job right now. No matter what decision you make, you will disappoint someone. Keep in mind that the decisions you make need to have a positive impact on the majority of our students despite your personal views about education. To our dedicated employees, thank you for your perseverance, perseverance and your resiliency. To our cabinet, collaboration is the only thing you can rely on moving forward. Thanks to my predecessor Romero Meritaya and a dedicated work of Lila Sackfield, the Triple A Board and USD leaders came together to move mountains to open schools during the pandemic. Triple A's dedication to having open, authentic collaboration has given you the ability to get input from boots on the ground to help you make informed and educated decisions. You need Triple A and its members. Personal agendas need to be pushed aside to do our most important work. Our site staff, including our brothers and sisters in CSCA and our site principals, are your most valuable sources of information when it comes to the needs of their sites. Phew, I left the classroom after twenty years. Sam Vicencio was my student my first year. She and many others are the reason I left the classroom to take this role, along with promises that we would continue to collaborate to make this district the best district in the county. Seeing Sam tonight makes me proud and makes me miss the classroom even more. Sammy, I'm so proud of you and I'm honored to have been a part of your life then and now moving forward. I know the community schools grant, which will fund up to twenty nine million dollars to our district, has been submitted. Triple A is making the promise to this community that we will be focused on representing you and your children when it comes to the development of our community schools. Community schools, true community schools are led by community members, including parents, students and any member of our community that is interested in moving forward progressive education. Triple A is looking forward to collaborating with USD leadership in the creation of community schools programs. And who better to develop specialized education for children than the dedicated educators and members of the school site communities? Triple A is dedicated to making sure our members and students are taken care of. And as you all make decisions, please understand that our staff is tired. We have had so many things added to our plates as opposed to things taken away so we can breathe. We have been pushed to our very limits and so have our students. Through this, we have excelled. Please hear us when we say we're overworked. Nothing done right is easy and we know that more than anyone. I will leave you with this. Lead by example. Do the right thing for the right reasons, no matter how hard it is, because our employees do this every day for you and for the students of this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to written communications, all have been distributed to the board. And now we're moving up to the consent. Are there any items that we want to pull or have discussion? Was this included in, no? That is separate. That being said, I need a motion.
Move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion to the second. Please vote.
There it goes. You were the computer.
It passes five zero. Going to N one, business services, second interim report.
Good evening, President Houston, board, cabinet, everyone here and at home. Uh, we went over a lot of this information a couple of weeks ago. And so, but by law, we must present our second interim report and ask the board to adopt this, which is a uh re adopting our adopted budget with new information and where we project in the year at. So some of this will be information that's already, we've already talked about at length. So first you see here, this is our, what we presented in first interim in December and then the second interim in the middle, and then the changes between the two. And this is just for the current year only. To explain some of those changes. So you can see that our combined uh general fund, uh, that's the first line is actually revenue. I didn't leave labels on there. Um, and that's uh driven by the adjustment that we made based on our audit report for our fair market value. We've explored that topic at length here in previous board meetings. Uh, and that's a, a dollar amount that reflects the uh value of our money in the bank. That's not necessarily a real dollar amount, but it's an accounting practice that we must follow uh to do that. Um, and so that's caused the adjustment you see there that's driven by our audit report that came out in January. Our expenses, you can see that's uh unrestricted, that drop there, that at negative value. Uh, some of that's, we're, we're do, because we've reduced our expected expenditures for the year based on our spending slowdown that we've been working with our school sites and, and departments on recently in order to meet the expected revenue reductions or that we're going to face in the future. Also transferring some of those expenses, we talked about as one of our plans in order to build uh some ending balance to survive what might come next from the state of transferring some of our expenses and spending down our existing remaining couple million dollars of S R funds. The uh transfers out, which is a line that generally doesn't change much in the course of a year, but it is here. Uh, this majority of that is the sixteen million dollars from Mackenzie Scott donation that we uh transferred out of our general fund into our investment that we had spoken about at a previous board meeting, currently earning interest. And then also uh we transferred less out, makes up the difference from the sixteen to the fifteen because we're delaying the uh adopting a new lease uh to refresh our iPads for our students at the lowest grade levels for another year as part of our, our measures to reduce our expenses, given this current situation. What's here are the assumptions that are built into our multi-year projections. That's part of our budget and how we analyze our budget over the course of this year and the next two. Just uh, we went over this in depth a couple of weeks ago. Does anyone have any questions about it before I move into the multi-year projection? This is the same information that was presented a couple of weeks ago. Here's the multi-year projection that we saw uh a couple of weeks ago. This is the second interim version of it now officially. Uh, and so you can see as that plays out, what's, what's built into this are also the uh planned reductions that we've talked about the last couple of weeks uh and, and here tonight. Uh, there, those dollar amounts are built into that. Uh, and you can see again at the bottom there uh at the third year, the one point seven million dollars above and beyond our required minimum reserve. On this slide are the, these are the amount of reductions, the dollar value of those reductions in each of those years that we, to spread that out as much as possible. So it's not happening all in one year, including what we're doing in the current year to reduce our expenses to limit what we have to reduce in future years. There's also that fourth year that's on there now that would become the third year uh of part of our adopted budget for next year. And then we talked about this one as well in length. Any questions on this at this point? Also want to bring back uh attention, I'm going to bring this up in every presentation I do on the budget because this is something that's, we have some influence over here in Escondido ourselves. Uh, and it certainly uh affects our revenue and also our learning. And that's our average daily attendance. The chart you see on the screen is our average daily attendance or the average number of students that are in attendance in our classrooms on a given day from the start of the school year till now. So that's the first month, there would be August all the way through uh January there, and we're watching that number closely. And we're watching that number closely because we have to use that to then make adjustments to what our revenue expectations are for next year based on what our actual average daily attendance is. As you can see, it's dropped from the beginning of the year. A lot of hopeful signs of it climbing up higher than it's been since COVID. But then has steadily declined, a little bit of a jump back up there in January. And we're still going to be watching that very closely. In another week, we're going to have numbers for the month of February added to this. I will say by watching the attendance, we, I watch this every day, we get a, I get a report every single day of how many absences we have. And actually, in the last few days, we've trended to have absences less than 1,000. And that's celebrating something that's not a great number. But certainly if we got our absences down to about 750, then we would be able to increase our revenue through our attendance. Not quite there, but we're trending in that direction right now. Dr. Barr?
Mr. McGuire, can you tell us what is the, if we increase by 1%, what's that, what's that in dollars?
So based on our current figures now and it adjusts number of kids, how much we're funded. But right now, the round number that we're using is that one percentage, percent of ADA is worth about $1 million. So if we were to increase our ADA, it'd be worth about a million dollars. You can kind of see the revenue impact on the charts on the bottom there. Just the drop of our ADA, which is contributing to that revenue impact there on that second line, on the two second charts there. The yellow bar on the bottom is, right now, we're projecting next year's ADA to be 94% in the following year. I just want to point out that this district's lowest year before COVID was 95%. And we've reached as high as 98. The districts, our district's personality and character is to have over 95%. Certainly COVID has had an impact on that. So we've been using a 95% number as we were building our budget for the future years. We've had to downgrade that to 94% in December just because of the current year's attendance. And if we need to make an adjustment down to 93, this chart kind of lends itself to that conclusion. You can see there would be a future revenue impact, most especially felt in the 25, 26 year. But we can do something about that ourselves here. And that's kind of an all hands on deck approach that I've been, we're all advocating for taking of getting our kids back into school every day. Is there any questions on that further? So our conclusions today, based on this, are that we would recommend a positive certification for our second interim report. That's just within the state law for our budget because we are meeting our minimum reserve requirements that we can declare ourselves having a positive certification. Certainly, there's a lot of things have to be done. A lot of it's spoken about tonight in order to achieve that. State funding, of course, and student attendance are the two big things, factors that are affecting our budget. And then we're going to have to continue to prioritize being fiscally solvent so that we can do the things that we need to do in order to actualize the unlimited potential of every single learner in this community. So our next steps then would be to, as, continue to prioritize our current year spending, working with our great office manager team at our schools. We've had a lot of meetings with them and lots of conversations about navigating this and prioritizing our spending and what can we, what should we do now? What can we wait for a future time for? And we're going to continue to do that as well as identifying any other expenses that we can remove that would not have a great impact. We have that study session on April 25th. Bush will continue this conversation in much more detail, come back with some of the research that some of it's asked for this evening, but also some from two weeks ago. And then continue this conversation and I think we'll have some news to share at that time as well about where we stand at that point, after all the work we're doing now. And then we're all going to be watching that, the May revision that the governor's going to come out with revising the budget proposal for next year. I know none of the news is good on that. And that's why it's not part of this presentation tonight, it's not part of second interim. But what we presented last time was our plan for utilizing any, we have remaining one-time dollars in order to absorb any few further cuts that the state might make so that we can avoid any further cuts to ourselves. Is there any questions at this point?
Any questions? Mark?
Thank you for the report. No, no real questions. I just would love to see, you know, I come from a marketing background, you know, if we can continue to communicate to our families, there is a direct correlation to the services that you want to see in having our students in class. I mean, that is a direct correlation. So if there's any way we can bolster that narrative and that communication and get all the stakeholders involved in messaging that, that's one way. Not the only way, but one way that we can help continue to preserve the services we all feel are vital and important to the success of our, of the students in this district. So that's just the thought, if we could make a little bit more emphasis on that. And I think us as board members also have responsibility in the communication to our constituents and our stakeholders, the importance of that. I mean, we, the reality is, we told families and students it wasn't important four years ago. And we're still fighting that battle. But it's a battle we should continue to address and to try and change that narrative to suit the things that we want to see in our district. So, thank you.
Thank you. I do have some comments. I don't want to rehash what you guys talked about at the board study session. I apologize, I wasn't here for that, but they did win the game, so they're champions. So I do apologize. Again, I know we're going to have the study session, but I do just want to get my thoughts out in the public of what I'm thinking and my priorities were for our budget situation. I think even the numbers we are dealing with is a very rosy picture. I think May, the May revise is going to be a bloodbath. And so I think we have to be prepared to make even more changes. I know, I, I'm, I listened to most of the board meeting, some of the, the audio. I know one of the comments is with that, that we did not listen to the LCAP survey. I would say, I know it wasn't mentioned, but that doesn't mean it was not considered and considered significantly because that is very important to us. Every one of us up here have been you guys out in the seats and come to the board meeting to talk because we were concerned about an issue. That's how we ended up here because we do care about this district and we do appreciate everything that everyone came to say tonight. Even though the LCAP wasn't mentioned by name, I know that is a very important topic and very vital to our decision-making process because it is important. Because that is a great way for those people who have taken the time to give their opinion to us, for us to see what is important with the, with the community, with the parents, with the staff, with even outside community members. What is vital and what we need to focus our attention on? Speaking, but speaking of the LCAP, one of those biggest things was the intervention. My big takeaway from this is that we need to focus on the tier one supports that we, the direct instruction that our students are getting. That's my main concern because if we have that strong foundation, it lessens our other tier two and tier three supports, which is where we're trying to get to. I know we're not there yet. So we still need those intervention supports. My biggest, biggest thing is the combo mitigation. I do not think we should spend any money towards combo mitigation at the expense of some of these other programs, especially like intervention. I really think if given the choice between having, you know, a small, a, a, a non-combo class where we're, you know, maybe affecting 12 students versus like a lot of our intervention coaches said, you know, 60 and 90 students a year. I think that's an easy decision between combo money and intervention money. I know we have some other great ideas for interventions as well, moving it to ELOP, doing it back in the classroom. But we still need, I think, we've spent a lot of money and time and training on our intervention coaches, which, you know, if they move back to the classroom, obviously they'll make wonderful classroom teachers. We have no doubt. But we do have them, a quite a highly functioning cohort of teachers that will serve this district well. When you asked about, you know, the research of where it's best spent, I think I've seen, I've had a couple intervention coaches email me their personal results from their classes this year, the, the changes that have occurred and the increase in learning and the increase in test scores that directly correlate to their intervention code, to their interventions. My other sig, oh, and before I forget, I appreciate you, you calling out Gate. I think that is so important. You are right. We have fought so long to have a Gate program. And that is important that we keep the funds towards it. Because we do, even though we have so many students on one end, we can't forget the students on the other end that really need to be challenged and really need to have that opportunity to expand their, their learning. So I don't think, I appreciate you guys going Gate and then the VAPA and everything because those are, those are important programs and music are important programs for our district. And we've worked hard to get them and I think we need to work hard at maintaining them. My other suggestion, which kind of falls in line with some of the people, and I apologize, I'm just rambling, but that falls in line with some of the comments about lessening teacher responsibility. I really understand what you're saying with that. We keep adding to your plate. One suggestion I have, which I keep bringing up, so I'm going to bring it up again, is the specialization in elementary school where we split up English and math. And so, you know, a teacher would teach two sections of English, two, or two sections of math that would cut their prep time in half. That cuts their training, you know, the, you know, the PD they have to do in half. And we could really help them focus on specialized subjects. And really, especially with, if we're lacking in some intervention, that's another area they could really work on and hone and do the intervention in the classroom as well and work on those subjects. I have a bunch more. I'm sure we'll bring it up again on the 25th. I appreciate all of the discussion. It was really great. I was listening to all of it, screaming at the screen at some point, so I apologize if you heard me. But, you know, we do have a lot of tough decisions. But, you know, we are trying to keep our focus on the students and what's going to give the most impact with the limited funds we have to our students and in the classroom. So that was my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
So a couple of points that I will agree with Ms. Harper on is that, yes, this is, this is tough. This is tough. There are, it, it is super tough because we have built some incredible systems. I will absolutely agree with you that our best intervention system is excellent first-time instruction. And our best intervention system comes in the classroom from the classroom teacher. And we have excellent teachers in this district. We, I hear about them every day. We watch them frequently. We have excellent, excellent teachers in this district and we all know it. Yes, we're going to be doing intervention after school. Absolutely. Yes, we're going to try to continue with some of our intervention teachers. But it's a lot of money that when that May revise comes around, we don't know what that's going to look like. And I'll agree with you on that. That's going to be ugly. And we just have to remember that our best interventions are also happening with our excellent, excellent classroom teachers. That is the best place so that our kids are in with their class or in with their reading group or their math group, however that's organized, and getting their intervention from their classroom teacher with the option of going to one of our ELOP programs after school. And if we can, for the goodness sakes, with an intervention teacher, but our best, our best intervention comes with, the best intervention for a student comes with the classroom teacher during their class setting, the teacher that they have made the closest bond with and the bond that will last forever. The bond that will last forever. And I see this day after day in my program, which is the high school equivalent of track, where when kids, 15, 16-year-olds want to talk with somebody, they want to talk to their first grade teacher and their second grade teacher. And that's kind of amazing. So I, I know all of our teachers are stressed and in pain right now. And I am truly, and, yeah. But I, and it's not just words when I say, the kids appreciate you. Everybody appreciates you.
I know I already had, no, but you, you made me, just going back to the teacher side of it, that's what makes that, our district so special. Like that parent says that everyone, you know, from outside our district goes, oh, don't send your kids there. And she came and she saw everything that those camp, that campus is doing and all the staff and all the students there. It really truly makes a difference because we do have the amazing teachers that support that. It wasn't much. Sorry.
In a perfect world. My fear is, and I hate to be the, the one to bring this forward, but the anticipated, because we have to prepare for the next year. After 24, 25 comes 25, 26. And we're, and it's looking like that bottom line is set a million seven. However, that's expecting, what was the expected COLA there, 2.?
Never mind.
And I'm, I'm concerned. Oh, there it is. That's the one I was talking about. Yeah. 2.73?
Yeah.
Given the deficit that's growing still for this year and, and extrapolating that and not seeing any, any fiscal responsibility at the state level, basically, in, in real, really addressing the need to cut before they go over a cliff. I, I, I can't see. And if that happens, if we're looking at another COLA of less than 1% or even 1% or even half that, 2.73, it could be a disaster. So we have to keep that in mind. The hardest part is, and I know that, and, and we had so many emails about the intervention teacher. I think that was the hardest pill to swallow, was the intervention. And I, and I understand that. And I know it's really needed. But again, something Doug said, the, the fact that the best intervention is the first teaching. And, and I think that that's what we've been working on for the last few years, getting there early. So we don't need as much intervention. There'll always be the need, obviously. But intervention's not going away. It may be in a different, at a different time. And that's, that's the hope I can give. I appreciate Testy's comment so much. I'm sorry you weren't at the budget meeting.
I'm so sad I wasn't.
Because your input is really valuable.
I'm, I was really sad I wasn't. I apologize.
As a, as a teacher, I don't have that experience. I only can, can look at it from a parent's perspective. So. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jill.
And someone who, who has a sharp pencil for my own budget. So.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McGuire.
Just one more thing before you is an item for the board to take action on.
Yes.
To adopt the revision to our budget, the second interim and accept the second interim report.
I need a motion.
Okay. I move that the board adopt the second interim report for 2023, 24.
Thank you. Let me get a second.
Second.
Do here.
Who's voting?
We need the music during this time.
Yes, we're working on that. It's a bumper.
Yeah.
And it passes five zero.
This is the list.
Next is the public transportation place.
I'm going to do this one from here. So last year, the state began a requirement where we have to present a plan in this month and for the board to adopt for our transportation program. Uh, and for the board to adopt for our transportation program. Uh, there's not a lot of change, so this is a lot of what we've discussed last year. And these are some of the required elements of that plan. Someone is gonna get through it here. Uh, just to overview that plan, it's also attached here. We just kind of go over some of the services we offer. Uh, some of the work we do with other agencies, including the city, public transportation, other school districts. And then how we serve the populations that we serve. And in our district, our primary focus for transportation is on our special education students. Go ahead. Hmm, uh, on the funding history, you kind of, uh. There's a, we've got additional monies that the state has given. It's required. This plan is required in order for us to get that, any future funds, the additional funds that may come. If, if that even continues to happen, given the situation of the state. Uh, in order to qualify for this, we have to have presented this plan and have it adopted by April first. Uh, the biggest update here is the, what we're currently working on. And in a previous board meeting, um, authorized us to enter to a contract with the company that's working with us to analyze our transportation program. Talking with our current vendor, with the high school district who also serves this community with their transportation department. And many people in this district, uh, and stakeholders, uh, that support or are supported by our transportation program. And the purpose of that is really to find, uh, more economical ways to provide transportation in order for us to be able to sustain. What we're doing, especially going into, uh, any sort of budget cuts towards transportation that the state might. Let us know about later. Uh, that work isn't done. It's ongoing, but once, once we do have, uh, some guidance recommendations, they're gonna give us many recommendations. Kind of a menu of options and we'll be doing a presentation for the board before we take any action on anything from that report. And then also, uh, just. Growth potential, and this is similar to what we were talking about last year, that we're gonna continue to explore different ways we can use, uh, transportation to support our ELOP program. As, uh, we have different things going on that might happen at different schools or different locations to start getting kids moved around for that. Uh, just opening the door to many other options. Our summer school transportation is, you know, we have summer, summer school in kind of a consolidated format at, at, at only a few of our schools. And so last year we had a. A, a network of buses to get the kids from their home schools to the, to the summer school sites. Um, and then of course, we're gonna, like I spoke about, we're gonna use that, the findings from that report, um. To discuss any changes and things we could do to improve our transportation program going forward. Does anybody have any questions? And then before you is a.
Can we go, or this same slide, working with the city of Escondido.
Sure.
Where does the city of Escondido fall into this?
Well, they're, they have a department that helps us as far as the public transportation. They kind of, I would say spearhead. I've been to several committee meetings. Where the, and I forgot the name of the organization, but the North County Transportation, the public buses.
North County Transit District.
Yeah, and the city kind of manages those meetings, um. For that, so they're a partner with us, uh, as, as far as just managing the city and transportation opportunities for all citizens in the city.
Do some of our students get free bus passes?
We have that opportunity, uh, through the.
Some of them take the, the public buses.
Yeah, and their, and their families, absolutely.
Well, everybody under, everybody under the age of eighteen. At this point gets a free bus pass.
Really?
Yeah.
And the neighboring districts that's on that line as well is not just the high school district here in town. We do actually, uh, contract with, uh, San Marcos. Unified to provide like field trip transportation. Um, and so any other district that has their own transportation department is an option for us as well to help us out in any way with transportation services.
So one of the things I heard when they were talking about the budget cuts in San Diego City Schools. They talked about laying off bus drivers. I apparently they have, uh, regular service. Transportation service for their regular education students as well.
Yeah, some districts are able to, to do that, um, for us to grow something into that is quite an investment, but. What you just spoke about was bus drivers becoming available for hire.
That's what I'm getting to.
And our, our current vendor, uh, uh, Student Transportation of America, STA. They, uh. Have had trouble finding bus drivers and we not gotten the number of routes that we need. And so certainly that's something that they would have their eye on. We will definitely remind them of that fact. But there's gonna be some bus drivers that might be available to increase to other number of routes that we need in order to keep our travel times low.
Cause that was the big problem with, with our, our current transportation.
That's right.
System, the bus, bus that we contract with.
That's right. And because of that shortage of drivers, we've had to use some of the kind of, it's like Uber-like transportation services. It's a much higher cost. But in some cases, that's all we're able to get, uh, for, to provide students for the necessary transportation to get to the schools that we've sent them to, uh, for our special education program.
It'd be good to remind them in case they haven't thought of it. They probably have, but you never know.
Uh, our director of purchasing who oversees our transportation program here is already, uh, drafting an email as we speak, I'm sure.
Any other questions? So this is a motion. We need a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Alright, do we have a second?
Second.
Mark. There's a motion in a second. Please vote.
So, so Doug mentioned we might have some Jeopardy music. We wait.
As we're waiting, yeah. And it passes five zero.
Yeah. Would make the time pass.
And next is gonna be N three.
Okay, regarding, um, item N three. Action upon student expulsion case number twenty twenty-three, twenty-four dash fourteen, move to accept the panel's recommendation. Um, with placement, return placement at a truck at another school.
Let me get a second.
Second.
We have a second from Jones. Please vote. It is approved five zero.
Regarding item N. Four, uh, expulsion case number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four dash fifteen, move to accept the panel's recommendation.
Second.
I'll second.
Motion of a second. Please vote. It is approved five zero.
Regarding item N five, action upon student expulsion case number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four dash sixteen, move to accept the panel's recommendation.
Second.
Second.
Joan, thank you. Please focus. It is approved five zero.
Regarding item N six, action upon student reinstatement case number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two dash zero eight, move to reinstate student. To a track program of the district's choice.
Yeah, we have a second for Mark. Thank you. Please vote. It is approved five zero.
And regarding item N seven, action upon student reinstatement case number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four dash zero zero. Move for a conditional reinstatement to a regular program with understanding that any violation. Of ed code will result in immediate track placement.
I'll second.
You have a second? Thank you, Rusty. Please vote. It's approved five zero. And eight? No, it's nine, it's N nine.
N nine.
Okay. Well. This is a.
Yeah, so N nine is the resolution.
And eight, and eight.
And.
Michael. Michael.
Sorry, um, N eight is the resolution for classified employees. Um, and in the Friday update, we had listed all of the specific, spec. I can't even watch specifications for each. Of the, um. Each of the positions listed. Do you want me to go through them all? No.
I need a motion.
I'll move.
Second. I'll second. Alright. Please vote.
Do you want it anymore? Do you want on?
You wrong, Tam.
Sorry, everybody. This is my fault.
We're gonna, they're gonna show how long it takes us to vote.
It is approved five zero. Going to N nine. We do have two speakers for N nine. Jen Brogan.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Brogan and I work at Hidden Valley Middle School as the seventh grade counselor. I just found out last week that myself, along with five other counselors, will be laid off at the end of the year. Due to the dire financial straits of the E, EUSD. What I implore you is that you are asking questions of the district. Being a diligent representative of the community you serve and doing your research on what cuts would least impact students. From the list you were given, the vast majority of these cuts impact students. Last year, Mackenzie Scott gifted this district with an incredible sixteen million dollar donation. She was impressed with the work the district was doing and wanted to continue and keep moving forward. I have heard tonight that that money is collecting interest in the bank. Part of the vision statement of the district states equity. Is achieved when all students receive the resources and support they need to be successful. Is EUSD really telling our community that we have the resources? But are choosing not to use any part of this donation to save programs and positions that help students. The feedback that the district received from the LCAP was clear. The community prioritizes counselors and social workers as one of the top three most important priorities. And they want to see more support, not less. Since COVID, the mental health needs of students have risen exponentially. Even with three counselors at each middle school, the students at our school have extreme mental health needs. Our counselors and school social worker have conducted forty risk assessments and threat assessments this year at our school alone. We have helped keep the campus a safer place by conducting restorative conversations with students who have conflicts with one another. We open our offices at lunch to give students a safe place to go. With a third counselor at each site, we are able to conduct counseling groups. Which helps students learn to better regulate and express their emotions. Just because the position is cut does not mean the work or the need goes away. Our community partner Vista Hill that provides counseling services to our students has had a waiting list since October. They are already struggling to meet the needs of our current students. I am not sure if you are aware that the counselors and social workers have recently begun to generate thousands of dollars. For the district through Medi-Cal billing. Cutting counselors will mean less money to the district, not only through Medi-Cal, but through less ADA. Since there will not be enough staff to outreach to our chronically absent students. I have loved my time working at Hidden Valley. I have learned so much from my colleagues and from my students. I don't envy the tough choices you have to make, but I ask that you think about the other options you could explore. That don't directly impact students or programs that support them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Molly Francis.
Good evening. Thank you, CSA, for staying. Appreciate it. Good evening, members of the board and cabinet. My name is Molly Francis. She, her pronouns. I'm a school counselor for the district. I'm here tonight to advocate for our students and the profession, profession of school counseling. The proposed cuts. The districts have made, or our district has made. Is removing over one third of our counseling staff. That is gonna have negative impacts on our families and our students. School counselors were in this predicament in two thousand and eight. When one counselor from each middle school was laid off. When this board decided to reinstate a third counselor at middle schools. And provide one for Quantum, first time ever. Awesome. We were able to provide grade level focused interventions specific to the academic, social and emotional needs of our students. The number of risk assessments and threat assessments increased. Because students had more access to a school counselor. We help keep students safe and increase student, our campus safety. Tonight, you will be deciding to remove access to services students need. And when voting to keep or remove six school counselors. Some may think that having a social worker at the middle school site is the same as having another counselor. But it's not. Though there's a lot of overlap, there are differences that make each position unique. And helping our students. I am curious why the only position for elimination in tonight's agenda is school counselors. School counselors save lives and change lives. School counselor positions are not discretionary, but essential. If school counselors are laid off tonight. Please do not wait thirteen years to reinstate a third counselor at the middle school site. Or at one at Quantum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion?
I mean, I think we, we are, we understand that. I mean, that's a very, it's a very tough decision. I appreciate you both speaking up and speaking for all the counselors because. We do have a student population that is hurting and they, and they continue to hurt and we have to be there for them. So. Um, I don't know how we move forward. I mean, we have to make the best decisions we can, um, given our situation. Um, I apologize that it direct, you know, directly affects you and your family and it affects the students that we're serving and that the resources will be thinner for them. We understand, I understand that. I don't want to speak for anyone else. I apologize, but, um, I, I apologize that, you know, we can't. Do more at this time, um, looking at everything. Um, it's really hard, um, to, to make these decisions and. Unfortunately, don't, eh, eh. Counselors and social workers and support staff are at, at the top of our list, you know, list to move when we get more funds and move through this, this trying time. But we understand and we appreciate everything you've done. I'm sorry, I, I don't have any. Uh, anything better to say. I just want to express my thankfulness to you guys and, um, we, we will continue to keep you top of mind to resume. But if, when we have the funds available, is, is my opinion. I don't want to speak for the board.
Any other?
Yeah.
I just re- recall, it's only in the past year that we added. The third counselor and I thought what a, a great thing to have. A counselor follow.
Yeah.
The middle schoolers through their grade level, so they got to know that, know their students. And it's really unfortunate, but, um. As you said, that would be. Top priority.
Yeah.
For restoration, absolutely.
Cause we understand there is the need. We're not, by making this decision, we're not saying there's not a need there and the need isn't growing, uh, so please understand that. We're not. We're not, um, not understanding that. Sorry, I'm random. Okay, I'll make the motion. I will.
I'll vote on you.
I know, I will make the mo- I'm sorry, I'm, oh, uh, I'll make the motion. You were gonna save me.
I'll second, was, you know, it's just a heavy heart that all of us are making this motion and making these votes. It's not, it's not easy and.
I'll second, was, you know, it's just a heavy heart that all of us are making this motion and making these votes. It's not, it's not easy and you know, nobody wants to make the motion and nobody wants to second it, but we have to make difficult decisions.
Please vote. It is adopted five to zero. Last is N ten. Which is the California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly Election.
Okay. I just have to say this is an exercise, an unnecessary exercise. There's a list of candidates. There are nine candidates and it says vote both.
No more than nine, yes, so we.
Basically, they're all going to be elected.
Right, so.
And that be, and that being said, I would only like to bring up Eddie Jones of Fallbrook and Dr. Don Souter. Those would be my only two votes.
Okay, is there anyone, uh, just go down the line. Mark, do you have any? Okay, is that Steve?
No, I don't have any preference.
Joan?
Nope.
So since uh, Doug brought up uh, Ed Jones, Eddie Jones and Dr. Don Soder, I guess we will elect those or vote for those.
For those.
Yes.
Do we have to vote? Do we have, do we have?
The board will vote.
Yeah, the vote, yeah. So basically, we will select Eddie Jones and Dr. Don Souter. We can put that up. We just need a motion?
Yes.
Elect those two.
You have a second? We have a second?
Then we vote and that's it. It's like, it's just.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Hey, please vote.
I know, I was.
And it passes five zero. Passes five zero.
Oh, okay.
Okay, moving down to P one, board members and board president reports. Mark.
I'll be, I'll be brief. I just want to, for anyone who's listening, I want to thank everyone who came out and shared their thoughts. It's not easy um, to come out and express how you feel, so I appreciate and just want to thank everyone, not just for coming out, but everyone that does the work and I appreciate everyone that sent us uh, messages. If, as was mentioned, we do hear you. It does help. Um, it's, it's given me new ideas. I'm sure it's given my board colleagues new ideas and we'll ask those questions of our, of Dr. Vara and his staff. Uh, so we can come up with the best possible solution. So it's through those uh, expression and through your advocacy that helps us, you know, adjust the lens with which we view things. So uh, appreciate all those who uh, came out and and everyone that has served so dedicated and know today was not an easy day and hopefully we can find ways to to move forward in a much more positive manner in the future. Thank you.
I echo your comments, um, because this is not an easy, easy discussions, easy decisions that we're making. Um, I just had one um, item was, uh, I toured Miller Elementary School and saw their ELOP program. Um, and uh, had a great discussion about their C's program. So it was kind of interesting because she had talked about Noah when I uh, talked to the principal. Um, and what a success story he was and wanted to come and do a movie with her. So that speaks volumes about what's going on over at Miller and the great job they're doing. And the ELOP program looked like it was up and running and the kids were really enjoying themselves. So that, that's my only report.
Thank you.
Um, I would also like to acknowledge everybody who came out and spoke today. Um, I'd also like to acknowledge the three teachers who have already sent me via text and uh, email meta analyses of the impacts of uh, tier two interventions on K through three literacy. So um, if you're still listening, I I will, I will look at those, although I kind of already know the results. Um, uh, just uh, some kudos for our staff again. Through all of this, our education system remains strong in this, in the Escondido Union School District. We have excellent teachers. Our teachers are going to continue to be excellent. And the education that are I experienced as a child, that my children experienced, that my parents experienced as students of this district will continue regardless of these financial times. Um, some other shout outs, uh, the safety screening around, I I I know it's going into a number of schools. I see it each night at Central Elementary and every day at Far Elementary. And I understand it is a small piece of safety is that concealment in the open fields. But it looks, it looks good. It looks good. I was afraid it was going to look. Um, it, that it was going to damage the looks of the school. It looks good. It was obviously very professionally done, so I just appreciate that. And I appreciate every effort that is being made to keep our children safe. Um, and that's, that's my report.
Thank you.
I appreciate and echo the comments about what we're facing with our budget. It's it's not something unusual for our district, but my heart goes out to those people who will. I mean, it's about people losing their jobs, basically. Not everyone. Uh, there'll be some changes and some moving around, but it it's, it's not easy. It's not easy to face. And um, hopefully I I've seen it before, that budgets run in cycles and at some point, I'm sure it will come back. And uh, but I appreciate what Doug said. The, our commitment to education will continue. And uh, in that vein, we did, we received many, many emails. A lot of them were with, attached to a PDF that talked about the loss of um, the. No, no, the intervention, intervention teachers at the five schools. But there were also a number of um, individually written. And I will tell you, I printed out a copy of the PDF, but I also I have read every one of the individual emails and it's, it's not lost on me. Uh, these are very difficult choices that, and we still have time to um, to tweak and to reassess. But I will say, I heard a comment that no one had mentioned the LCAP, but I, uh, one of the things I have to report on was that I attended the last DAC meeting, the District Advisory Council meeting. And we were given the opportunity serendipitously again to participate in um, giving input for the LCAP and I, and I gave my input as well. But those choices that we had were very, very difficult. We were given two colored dots for each LCAP goal and we had to choose. And everyone was really struggling over it. So um, we'll, we'll make the best decisions we can to keep increasing and benefiting the education of our children. That's the most important thing. Because they are our future. I always say that. So I also participated in the last design team meeting, which received some criticism tonight. And uh, attended the Gate Collaborative. Oh, by the way, the, at the at the DAC meeting, it was mentioned that we have, uh, Ignite was on the consent agenda, some funding for Ignite to participate in a competition. But for those uh, kids who who aren't able to participate in Ignite for some reason or another, there is a program offered at the Center for the Arts. And I'm looking, I wrote it down. Uh, here it is, called A Step Beyond. And there was a, there was a mother there who was singing the praises of a step beyond and the benefit to her daughter. So that's something we should um, make sure that, what that parents know about as well. We could get that information out. They also had, also the Gate Collaborative. This is interesting as well. We had a presentation from uh, Dr. Sunny Magana, Magan, Maganya, Maganya. And he uh, used the, our our new focus, the framework to uh, incorporate into his, his talk, but he talked about nurturing meta learners. And I actually had to look up what is a meta learner? According to the dictionary, the meaning of meta learning is described as learning to learn. And so it, I don't think he clarified that. Or did he ever say those words?
He tried to.
Yeah, but I think it would help the parents. And I think what's really important, especially in our gate program, I wish we would focus more on ta, talking to the parents about how to encourage their children and how to help them and how to understand them. Because gate kids are different and they're not always easy to deal with. Just another one of my parental perspectives. Oh, and I had, the, the best part was I had the opportunity to read at Oak Hill School to a pre-K class. Those kids, I will tell you, it was the best behaved cla, pre-K class I have ever seen. They, they took their places on their little mat and they were all attentive and ready to hear the story about elephant and what is it? Elephant and pig. And those stories are hilarious, but they loved it. They absolutely loved it and, and uh, I never heard a peep. So, smiley faces. I wish we could, I wish we could keep them all growing up with that attitude towards life. They are so innocent and loving then. And so when I left, I got the hearts. And I got even a kiss blow to me. Made my day. It just absolutely made my day. So I'm looking forward to reading at um, Juniper tomorrow, but I have a fourth grade class, so we'll see how that goes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and uh, I just wanted to echo everything that was said. Because we are running into some difficult times, a lot of these decisions that are made are never made lightly. And our goal as a group is to make sure that we continue. But one of the biggest things that we have to remember is that we have to stay solvent. If we don't stay solvent, then we're not serving the children and the students. So um, none of these decisions that we made this evening and are gonna be coming up are easy decisions. And we, we basically hope that if it does affect you, we are sorry, but we do care. And it, and it's a decision that we do have to make. And that, that's my, that's all I have to say. Thank you. Dr. Bar.
Well, I think it's all been said. You know, I think I echo the same sentiments and really said. There's still a lot of, a lot of left, a lot of time left um, before we get to the end of the year. Um, we've got a, we've got some tough choices to make and continue to explore. Um, but ultimately, I do believe that we, we have some remarkable people working with us, so. And the kids are amazing. And if um, transition into the Saturday, we do have the Smart Festival where we get to feature our, our students and featuring their arts. You know, there'll be performances on stage, uh, featuring a lot of our dance troupes, the Ballet Flóclorico and all the wonder, and Ignite will be there as well. So a lot of uh, great opportunity to watch our kids shine. And so it's um, that's at the Center for the Arts from ten to one on Saturday. So please, if you have time, please come out and see our kids. So that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Anything from the board? All righty. That being said, our next board meeting? Our next board regular, our next regular scheduled board meeting will be held on Thursday, April eleventh at seven PM at the Escondido Union School District, Caroline Gilbert Education Center. We will not be going to close session and we are adjourned.